Good evening. I'm Brian O'Connor, Chairman of the Stratford Planning Commission. It is Tuesday, June 20th, 2023. It's 6:00 PM. I am calling this meeting to order. First, I'd like to welcome our elected members, Paul Aurelia, William Boyd, Sarah Graham, and Alec Bacola. We also welcome Sismita Atata, our Town Planner, and Aileen Marsh, our Recording Secretary. I'd like to remind everyone that we have no public hearing items for review tonight. The public is free to listen but may speak only at the invitation of the Chair. If any of the members wish to discuss any item on the agenda, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. Please identify yourself by name and title each time you'd like to speak. And the first item on the published administrative agenda is the approval of the minutes from, it was a special meeting on May 23rd, 2023. Looking for a motion to approve these minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from May.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, so moved. We now have two zoning commission referrals, all regarding text amendments. These are carried over from the last meeting. Just as a reminder, all zoning referrals regarding text amendments are considered recommendations by the Planning Commission. They're not approvals or disapprovals. This is an administrative hearing. The main focus is how do they correlate with the POCD? We're moving, due to a short presentation, we're going to move the first text amendment to make it the second text amendment. So, the text amendment we're looking at now is the petition of 600 Silver Lane, seeking a new 33 titled "Church Repurposing Development to Allow for Residential Development at the Former Church Site." At this time, I'm just looking to open this for discussion.
Paul Aurelia, I'll make a motion that we open this item for discussion.
All in favor? Aye. Mr. Atata, if you don't mind, can you please give an overview? I know you did it last month, but just anything new has come up as well in the past month?
Sure, Chairman. So, last month, this commission has requested more information from other town staff regarding evaluating this proposal based on its impacts to surrounding land uses, density, and traffic. And I reached out to the concerned departments, and I did receive comments from our town engineer that I have emailed to you all. And in the meantime, the applicant has also revised their text amendment to state that this particular new Section 33 would apply only to those churches who have been vacant for more than five years, correct me if I'm wrong, and which is in 500 feet of a town boundary and one mile of a transit-oriented development district. And our town engineer, in his comments, stated the following. I'm gonna, for the record, for the general public's information, I'm gonna read it into the record. It says that, "Since the sewer system was sized for the existing uses and zoning requirements in place at the time of the planning and design of the facilities, changes that increase density and sewer discharge could exceed the capacity of the system. In these cases, separate water pollution control authority approval is typically required for these type of developments. The regulation could also be modified to include compliance with MS4 stormwater quality goals through low-impact development and stormwater storage to decrease the directly-connected impervious areas. Also, for stormwater quantity, a requirement for no net increase in peak rate of stormwater runoff up to the 100-year storm." So, essentially what he's saying is that when the system was, when the parcels were laid out, they were designed keeping in mind single-family uses. So, addition of density in those areas means that they would need separate sewer approvals from the Water Pollution Control Authority. And also requiring compliance with the municipal stormwater permit goals because, you know, Stratford is part of the municipal stormwater permit system, and we have to be mindful of the amount of impervious area and the amount of discharge into the sewer system in general.
Look, you could, if you have another presentation, or if anything's changed since the last time?
Sure. Again, for the record, I'm Attorney Stephen Bellis, and I represent the applicant. You had, I had brought some exhibits. Can I pass them out? Yeah.
Please do.
So, the first, is it easier if I just take one and pass it along? So, the first exhibit I'm giving everybody is the settlement agreement between the town of Stratford and 600 Silver Lane. This was, remember, part of a global settlement with many, many, many cases. So, this is the one for Silver Lane. And in it, it basically says that I'm to file a text amendment, which I'm doing now, then go to zoning and wetlands. And that the approval that the town agreed would be no more than a total of 14 units. Three of them are in the church, 10 of them are new family homes, and one of them's in the rectory. So, I just wanted you to have a copy of that, because I did bring it up to you last time. And then, if I can pass around the text amendment. Some of the members had, I thought, a good point from your commission. And so, what I did was, I changed Section 33.1. I also ran it by one of the Stratford, or was mentioned by one of the Stratford Town Council members, and we added a restriction that this, this new church repurposing development can only be in an R3 zone within one mile of a bus stop. And Sismita has already explained that we had limited it, as she had stated, to a church that's been in existence for five years, that's no longer being used for religious services, and is within 500 feet of the Stratford-Bridport border. But on top of that, we added that it has to be in an R3 zone within one mile of a bus stop. The reason for that also was because you have a transient district policy in your plan of conservation and development, that you want to encourage people to have access to public transportation. So, that's what this is all about. So, I wanted you to see that I did do what, and thank you, I think you recommend, mentioned it to me. So, I do listen to what you people say. And the last thing, I think someone had a comment. I know it's not germane, but I just wanted you to have it. We had a soil biologist do a report to make sure if the property were at 600 Silver Lane and it were approved by the zoning commission, whether it would have any impact on the wetlands. And the answer was no, but I just, I know it's not in your jurisdiction, but someone asked me, so I'm just giving it to you. So, the process goes as your chairman has suggested. This is just a referral. We have tomorrow night a wetlands hearing. Then we go to zoning for the second time, and they're waiting to hear if you are going to, I guess it would be called a recommendation, I suppose, a referral recommendation. And then, the zoning commission actually takes the action in this particular case. So, I'm here looking for a recommendation, basically. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, unless there's questions. Oh, I do thank you for putting me first. I have to be in trouble.
At this time, any of the commission members can ask either the attorney or Sismita?
When we updated 33.1, the town had created a traffic report and contained a mile of a bus stop. Do you have any churches or that, Stratford, for that?
I don't have a specific number. I don't think there's too many.
And then, can you resummarize this, the first packet that you handed out, something about?
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah. The first packet, I think I handed out, was what we call the settlement agreement. Is that what you referred, okay. So, yeah, 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 no problem. So, I don't know, for, let's say, more than five years, there was a lot of litigation between certain of my clients and the town of Stratford. And the Kevin Kelly, Attorney Kevin Kelly, and I got together, and with the mayor and with my clients, and we came up with a settlement agreement that settled all the litigation and all the disputes in front of the land use boards. There may have been, I don't know, 10, 12, I don't really know. And they're all going to court tomorrow. All the, all the appeals are gonna be withdrawn, all the, all the fighting's going to end. That's not really legal language, but that's the juxtap of it. And if the court approves it, which I am told he will, we're gonna go to court tomorrow. Then there was a modification because on, and that's what's in front of you, we had to modify the agreement because there wasn't enough units given on the other properties that my clients owned. So, the town and my client agreed, instead of doing an 830G and having 28 units, they cut it in half and came to 14. No 830G, all fair market value, regular, single-family homes. And that was the settlement. So, that was the agreement. That's the agreement between the town of Stratford and my client. My client has signed it, and the mayor has signed it. I just wanted you to have a hard copy. I mentioned it.
So, they settled the other ones, or what I'm saying?
They settled this one, too.
So, that you can have, if it passes us, then you can have this other?
Up to 14, yeah. 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 Yes, yes.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Comment?
Yes, sir.
Back to you for the adjustments, I see.
Okay.
Well, my concern that I had, I think the resident board had it last time, that we directed this Sismita asking this question again. So, Sismita, did those adjustments, you know, 500 feet to a bus stop, or 500 feet to the town line, the one mile to a bus stop, I know those were to address some of the issues from a POCD standpoint?
Yeah. Let me just give you an overview of what the role of this commission is, and how it is slightly different from what zoning will be looking into. So, this commission is tasked with making sure that you come up with developing a plan of conservation and development, and ensuring that the goals and policies of the plan of conservation and development are applied to various planning proposals. And of course, ensuring through that compatibility between various land uses, as identified in the future land use map. So, in this case, yes, they, you know, if this commission were to not recommend favorably, you still are advisory-only, and zoning commission has to pick up four votes to actually pass this motion. So, the church sites that the applicant is talking about are located in single-family zones. In our future land use map, in the current, you know, land uses or future land use map, we do not identify separate parcels for churches. We just identify them as being part of single-family residential zones. So, you could either, you know, redevelop those parcels as single-family homes, and religious uses are exempt, you know, because, based on the RELOPA Act. But, in this case, the applicant is doing the opposite. They're trying to switch from a religious use to a multifamily use. Now, our future land use map does not encourage multifamily developments in single-family zones. So, it is inconsistent with the plan of conservation and development. And by doing, by applying a particular text amendment to a handful of parcels in the town where the, you know, whatever the parcel is of, has to be redeveloped, this could be argued as spot zoning. Spot zoning means you're handpicking parcels to redevelop them based on the use that you want to put in there, and spot zoning is illegal. So, before you is not the settlement. You're not concerned with the settlement.
Understood.
You are not concerned with the development proposal, but you're concerned with the proposal, the actual proposal, and its applicability to the plan of conservation and development.
Thank, thank you for that.
Well said.
Well, based on that, I had a question or a comment. So, what you're saying is specifically that parcel there, we as a POCD are, in so many words, legislating on that one as part of our POCD, and we're not discriminating against future ones? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we don't even know how many parcels will be subject to this amendment. When I looked up through Google search, clearly, I wanted to identify all those parcels. There were five pages full of churches' addresses. And you don't know how many of those are, you know, unless somebody creates a map and identifies and measures the distance, 500 feet from the town boundary, and measures one mile from a bus stop, not a train station. There are many bus stops in the town. And the sizes of those parcels, it is hard to determine how many parcels would be impacted by that. However, all those parcels that would be impacted could be considered as spot-zoned because you are changing essentially the land use character of those parcels that is not identified in the future land use plan of the POCD.
So, okay, so my question with that was, I think that 500 feet from a town line, why is that line there that's so constricting?
Because they want to benefit their proposal, and they want to eliminate all the other concerns that zoning has raised. In zoning commission staff report, there were concerns about the impacts of the proposal, you know, to the surrounding properties. And I know this commission had raised questions on density and traffic impacts, which I think to some extent is reasonable to look into through a POCD lens, not through a development proposal lens. So, you're essentially trying to ensure that your land uses are compatible.
Yeah. If I can just?
I was gonna make a comment, if you don't mind. Just, Sismita, and going along with Paul, you were asking if any of these new, recent updates to this, the files we were given, does that change any of the consistencies or inconsistencies? I'm more looking, I guess, one of the things that the, you know, our report, the administrative report says is, it's from the population of housing. It says, "To develop living opportunities that promote healthy lifestyle, including walking, the construction of bicycle trails, and facilities for other alternative, or other alternatives to automobile travel." I mean, putting, saying that this is within a mile of a bus stop, is that, would that go along with meeting this POCD goal? Would you consider one mile?
So, one thing I would say that's not in this is about single-family zones and protecting the character of single-family zones. I know transit-oriented developments are overlaid over single-family zones, but then transit-oriented developments are allowed by state statute, and there is a reason why they have been, you know, introduced. And that does not affect a handful of parcels. It affects the entire area in which you're, you know, outlining the overlay district. This is not an overlay district. This is a new map change for specific parcels and the associated text amendment.
And it's, that was actually pointed out, I believe by Mr. Hibansky. It was line item one, community character, identify opportunities for redevelopment and revitalization of a character's area. This text appears to be inconsistent with this objective. Thank you.
Yeah. So, the Plan of Conservation and Development is a guide that's given to you all. It's, I call it a roadmap, and there's different goals in it, and you can cherry-pick certain goals. But there's goals in there to have more multifamily use. There's goal, there's other goals, as the chairman says, of being able to walk to a bus stop. I just want to point out, in this particular proposal, this is not an apartment building. These are single-family homes. And it's limited to an R3 zone. So, now, an R3 zone in your town is approximately, you know, a third of an acre, right? So, these are not one acre, it's not allowed in a one-acre zone or a half-acre zone. So, that's why that was put in there, to limit it to be consistent in character, single-family home in an R3 zone has a smaller lot size. These are single-family homes. And so, you and I, looking at a map, can see where the property lines are, but if you were just to look out on the street, it would look like a subdivision, you know, a cul-de-sac with single, 10 single-family homes around it, so. I think it would be in character with an R3 zone. Would it be in character with an R1 zone? I would have to tell you, no. That's why it was done that way.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, I had a follow-up question to what you were saying. So, hypothetically, TOD zone, POCD, a TOD zone, let's say the church on the corner there, forgot, the United Church on the corner, that's in a TOD zone. So, if they wanted to do multifamily there, that would be considered, the state would consider something like that, because it's in a TOD, it's bus stops, you could walk to the train station. So, that would be a state overlay. However, with the church there, that's under the purview of the town, the POCD, and we as the board have to look at that as an individual, is what you're saying? Parcel? And if we look at that one individually, what if there was a different church on another outskirts, like in lordship? Would we look at that one the same way as we looked at this one on Silver Lane? That's where I'm a little confused.
For the TOD zone?
No, not for TOD.
No, I'm just going back on your first part of the discussion about TOD.
Oh, sorry.
There was a plan in place, a TOD plan, that was developed with extensive public input. It was adopted by the council, and then that plan was recommending, you know, the POCD recommends sub-area plans, and that was part of the goals, you know, of the POCD. So, the town did the TOD plan, they developed a policy, and then they established a zoning district and the standards. In this case, Mr. Bellis is right, it's not multifamily. It's seven housing units per acre, which is like, you know, the minimum, the maximum density, they said, is 5,000 square feet per unit. So, current RS3 zone standards have 7,500 square feet lot size. But in this case, the density is 5,000 square feet per unit. In that case, you have one home for one lot, one home for 7,500. In this case, you would have one home for 5,000 square feet. That is the difference. Coming back to where else it may apply, it may not be applicable to lordship because, you know, I, clearly, without a map, it's hard to tell where exactly, you know, the bus stops are, and, you know, how this will play. But again, like I said, your thing is about ensuring consistency with the POCD and not looking at the actual development proposal. And based on Jay Hibansky's staff report, and based on the lot sizes, you know, the first one itself saying that, you know, you have to protect the community character, you could arguably state that it is inconsistent. Yes, you have some recommendations that kind of encourage rental housing and transit ridership and other things. But again, it is hard, without a plan, identifying where those locations could be, where you could have logically this kind of transit-oriented developments, you cannot change the zone. There should be a plan that guides the zone. And in this case, the plan is missing, you know, or this discussion is missing from the POCD, and so it is hard to say, you know, it is consistent.
I understand. Thank you. Do any other members of the commission?
Mr. Chairman, another, another comment. So, my dilemma this week is, or this month, is the same one I had last month, and that's that we try to be consistent with the POCD, and we try to rely upon staff reports to kind of spell things out for us. So, we have, at this point, we have two staff reports from the planning and zoning administrators, both kind of saying that this, this text amendment is largely incompatible with the POCD. For me, that's a problem. I, again, I was trying to figure out if some of the adjustments that you made went towards eliminating those issues, but I see that the June 13th report from you says basically this, that it's still incompatible with, with the POCD. I, as a, as a commission, we've always tried to be consistent on our POCD guidance when it comes to deciding these issues. So, for me, that's a dilemma right now. That's my two cents.
Thank you. And we always look to the zoning and planning office for these types of comments, and they both are aligned on this. And again, as a reminder, Sismita said it very eloquently, our job here is to make, render decisions based on the POCD. That's our, those are guidelines, and we have to stay consistent. With that being said, do any other members have any other comments or questions for anybody?
I did have one comment, William Boyd. I believe Sismita said, "We're keeping with the POCD, but zoning could override whatever we would legislate here," with, I believe he said, four votes. So, we're tasked with trying to keep it within the POCD, but they could further see a different scenario and go, "Yeah, we agree." So, we're only in the recommendation stage. We can't say yea or nay as a planning commission. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. And even, like, I, I have a staff and other board in the town, which is also advisory, and most of the times, I see the commission members are in a dilemma, you know, what if they gave unfavorable recommendation, but it's overturned by the zoning commission? How would they still ensure that some of these concerns are considered? So, one way that I have suggested, both to write the recommendation letter is to, whatever, if you choose to give an unfavorable recommendation tonight, you could say, "Planning commission gives an unfavorable recommendation because it is inconsistent with the POCD objectives." However, if we realize or we understand that zoning commission could override this recommendation through a supermajority vote, and if zoning were to choose to vote this favorably, we recommend at least consider the following concerns raised by the town engineer, and just keep it like that.
Thank you. Generally, we put conditions on zoning approvals, like you go to the WPCA and you go to, you have to submit a storm drainage report that would comply with the town. So, that's standard. That would happen at zoning, not at your level, usually.
Thank you. Does any of the elected members have any further comments or questions? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll, I'll try a motion. Before I do that, though, I want to say thanks for trying to adjust it since last month, but I'm still gonna make a motion that we give an unfavorable recommendation to the zoning commission. And the reason for that is because of the inconsistencies with the POCD that have been pointed out. However, if the zoning department decides to, again, override the unfavorable recommendation, that they, that they please keep in mind the reports from the town engineer and from the health department that were included in the packet.
Do you have a second?
Sarah, I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Aye. Aye, so moved, unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. We're now on to the second zoning commission referral. This is in regards to the petition of Platypus Partners LLC, seek to amend Chapter 8.2.2, non-marine uses in waterfront, and 15.8, add restaurant liquor permits in waterfront. First, I'm looking for a motion to open this for discussion.
I'll make a motion to open this for discussion.
I'll second that.
All in favor? All in favor? Mrs. Tadi just did such a great time last time, so if you don't mind, can you give us an overview and, uh, just a recap of what we've discussed, and if there's any new, um, things that have come to fruition that would change anything in our reports?
Thank you, Chairman. So, um, in the last month's meeting, this commission has advised me to reach, uh, town staff and seek their input on, um, proposed, um, text amendments impacts on surrounding land uses, public health, and traffic and safety. Um, so I have reached out to the other town staff and received comments from the town engineer and the health department, which I will summarize in a bit. Uh, but I also wanted to let you know that, um, the applicant has shared a memorandum with Planning and Zoning Administrator, um, I think on Friday, and, um, essentially, that document I copied and I put it on your desks, uh, and also emailed you earlier today, um, since I was out on Friday, but, um, they're, um, you know, making modifications to their originally submitted text amendment, um, to, uh, control alcohol consumption in a manner they do at the restaurant, and, um, making events ticketed only, and, um, also removing certain uses like sale, um, of, I mean rentals of paddleboard and kayaks, um, on-site, and ensuring that, um, the operational hours are, um, maintained through the week. Um, so the food trucks operating on the lot Wednesday nights and Fridays, Saturday, and Sunday afternoons with occasional weekend, a weeknight event or weekday holiday. And, um, so they also had some discussion in their memo on parking and traffic, annual renewals, and, um, alternatively, the applicant said if they're not allowed to do this, then they would have to build a residential development that has to be raised, uh, at least fourteen feet above sea level. Uh, I also received a memo from their attorney, Barry Knott. Um, he's out of town today, he's unable to attend this meeting, but, um, I shared that with, uh, you on Friday itself through our secretary, and unfortunately, I couldn't photocopy, uh, the document today because we had some printer issues, but, um, the same stuff that I just summarized was discussed in the memorandum that was shared by the Just to give you a recap of the proposed zone text amendment, they're trying to, um, make amendments to waterfront zone, uh, district, which will enable the applicant to redevelop their site across the street from existing little pub restaurant, which is largely vacant right now, and to include four food trucks there, and two of which will serve, uh, alcohol, and also to remove, uh, to consider food trucks as pri, as primary principal uses on the, on that site and not as accessory uses, and, um, ensuring that, um, uh, you know, retail and service establishments, including, um, um, you know, sale of beach chairs, towels, umbrellas, I don't know if that's still, you know, going to happen there, but, um, yoga classes, movie nights, open-air markets, or any other similar uses, um, that to allow them on that site administratively by the zoning, uh, as determined by the zoning commission or planning and zoning administrator. They also are requesting an exemption from the mixed-use requirements of section eight point two point two, in order that food trucks are allowed on that lot. And, um, it, with that, um, I would also like to summarize the comments that I received from our town engineer, which I will read out for the record. Regarding the proposed amendment to eight point two point two, which is, um, the number of uses that were listed, um, in that section, "Since so many different things that would be allowed in the zone, including restaurant in a waterfront zone, previously restaurants were excluded from waterfront zone, I believe, as well as seasonal sales and open-air markets in addition to food trucks, there doesn't seem to be enough regulation for design standards for such activities. Off-street parking requirements, control of pedestrian traffic, and some requirement for trash litter control seems appropriate. For the Washington Parkway site, there is so much on-street parking there, pedestrians can get the feeling they're in a parking lot rather than a public through road, and can become distracted if they're encouraged to cross the street for open-air markets, seasonal sales, uh, and food trucks, which are a buy-and-walk type of sale." Our environmental health supervisor offered the following comments on, uh, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. "My main concern is whether these will be the same trucks all year, or is it seasonally? Licensing and inspecting four new trucks each week will add a lot to our workload." Um, she also included her comments sent on May eleventh, twenty twenty-three, which states, "A full plan review and menus are required to be submitted by the health department for each truck. Specification sheets are needed for all restaurant equipment. Dumpster area must be on a four-inch concrete pad with privacy fencing. Permanent water line and electricity is required. Each truck will be licensed separately. Appropriate number of porta-potties and gar, garbage cans are required." She also mentioned that, um, our town code allows a temporary license only for fourteen days. A full-year license requires more attention, equipment, and paperwork from health department and for the person applying. So all F D A regulations are required for that scenario versus a temporary, which allows more flexibility.
Thank you. We're going to open this up for questions and comments. Does anybody have any questions for William?
Yes, from what I'm seeing here, in, in reading all what Platypus Partners are proposing, they're trying to figure out how to use that lot to make themselves more profitable. And with the food trucks here, they're saying they would have three or four food trucks, but it looks like what the town is saying, those food trucks are only good for fourteen days, and they have to be affixed more than a food truck. They would have to be more like a permanent line, so it seems to be a contradiction as to what they want to do, how the town wants it to happen. It, it seems like a conflict here from the environmental health supervisor. So am I reading this correctly, that what, what Platypus is, um, proposing, that doesn't look like it can happen based on the statutes of Stratford? Am I reading that right? Based on the environmental health supervisor?
I think the health supervisor's just pointed out that, um, and Mrs. Tada's pointed out in, in her comments that it needs to be more defined. Are they planning on being year-round, or is it seasonal? And, and the reason why the he, health and environmental, they would have to reprocess this permitting every fourteen days if it's not, you, you know, if they haven't decided if it's going to be a full, you know, all year round. You know, in, in the comments from, uh, one of the comments provided, I, I don't remember who it was from, it was probably from Attorney Knott, was that they do have, you know, electricity, the right, full, they have electricity. I didn't see a comment about water, but those are two things that, if it was going to be permanent, you just have to make sure that there was live electricity and, and water to feed these trucks.
Right, my other, second question was, you're talking about, um, kayaks and paddleboats. Beyond that wall, that slither, sliver of beach, do they own that, or is that public? Like, what, what would these paddle?
There's a lot of, sorry. There's a lot of commentary in here that he did give us, saying that he's going to re, um, take back the paddleboard kayak.
Right, he's going to take it back.
And it even talks about auto annual renewal, so yes, he's defining more, but he says he's happy to renew it annually.
Right, he's, they're taking it back, but my question is, can they even do that anyway? Isn't that a public beach?
Well, they would just be providing the kayak, it, it seems like the proposal, they were going to be, you know, providing kayak rentals, and then, once after the rental of the kayak, if they brought it to the public beach, it would kind of coincide, right?
Okay, so you crossed a wall, you own, you, you, you can just use it.
Yeah, right.
But they don't own that sliver.
No, yes.
Okay, that's what my question kind of was.
Mr. Chairman, P O C D guys back here. Um, so I noticed that this was largely, um, compliant with the P O C D in general, this text amendment as written, um, I believe in, um, Jay Hibansky's report. That's correct?
Yeah, um, like, you're all in the middle of updating the P O C D, and you know, um, based on what you've heard from the community and what the current plan states.
Right.
Um, you want to reactivate the waterfront, and you want to have waterfront redevelopment. So this aligns well with the P O C D goals and objectives for waterfront, to activate public waterfront. Um, there are some, um, in, uh, impacts associated with it, um, that have to be addressed, like you raised at the last meeting, but I think there is a way to address them through the text amendment language, not just for this property, but for all waterfront sites that'll be impact, impacted by the proposed text amendment. Having, um, certain standards, um, like the town engineer has mentioned in his comments, would actually help improve the proposal and make it, um, you know, a much better proposal for everyone involved in that location.
Thank you, and, um, one other question is that, I think I know the answer to this, but this, this text amendment isn't specific only to the, uh, Little Pub's property, this is, this, um, goes to waterfront areas in other places in town, too. Yes?
That is correct.
Okay.
And for example, I think you have Naps Landing, you have River View Bistro, you have, um, Army Engine Plant, and, um, there's Shakespeare Property Site, I think that is part of Theater District, but there are some waterfront zone sites there, too. So, um, a bunch of properties by the waterfront that are zoned currently SWF.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so in concert with this, what is your position on this? Like, we, it's part of P O C D, that's where our job is tasked, to make waterfront accessible. What are your thoughts?
This is a good question. Um, my position is consistency, right? We just made a determination based on, um, consistency or inconsistency with the six hundred Silver Lane, and based on what we're seeing in the P O C D, and I also, um, we've all been a part of the future P O C D, and a part of that was public outreach. Um, and I don't know about you and these events, but I've heard a lot of people saying excessive, talking about accessibility, and one of our strongest parts of, of, uh, Stratford is our coastline, and, um, again, that's all, all of that public communication is going to be embedded in the next P O C D, and it was embedded in this, the previous P O C D, which is what we're still following, and based on that, the comments and consistency again, the, this proposal sounds overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly consistent, um, based on Mr. Hibansky's report, as well as Mrs. Tada's report. Any other questions or comments?
So I guess the issue is, we're tasked with making the coastline accessible, but in doing so and being consistent, some people are used to a certain thing, and they're not going to be acceptance of changes going forward, even though we have to grow, you can't keep the same character that you're used to in trying to expand something. It's kind of a, it seems like a, a contrasting thing that's happening, I think.
Are you saying, because there's people, some people that are going to be in opposition of this, and there's some people that are going to be for this?
It seems more, the opposition's seemingly louder, but to your point, in all the events we did, it, they wanted more access, but the powers that be seem to be louder.
Right.
To overpower what the actual people wanted in their comments and all the, in the meetings we did.
So I'm just going to go back to my previous statement, for our job is to be consistent with the P O C D.
Got you. Makes sense. And, yep, Mr. Chairman, I would add to that, um, consistency and, um, applicability to other parcels in town, this isn't just one parcel we're talking about.
Correct.
Yeah. I think that makes a difference, too, in my opinion.
Anybody else want to ring in?
Lastly.
The, no?
The parcels are unique. That parcel there is unique because it comes to a point in this traffic. River View Bistro, there's a parking lot, and there's coast, there's, they're all particular, they, they're different in character. So being consistent, you're going to be inconsistent because each, uh, parcel is different. And they're on a different, they're in a different area, traffic, planes, pedestrian, so you can be consistent but look inconsistent in your decision-making in what we approve for certain things, because the parcels are all different, like Army Engine Plant, that street is almost barren, no one ever goes back there, other than for a restaurant.
Right.
So.
Um, and again, this, going back to what our job tonight is, right, to be consistent with the P O C D, this is a referral to the, um, zoning commission, and with that being said, whether we go favorable or non-favorable tonight, we would make the recommendations, and one of those recommendations could be, like you said, uh, making sure that there's ample, you know, parking. I believe one of the comments even, um, in Sussmita's report, um, had to do with parking, and then also, it was a consideration that was given to us by the town engineer, if you recall, it was, talked exactly about that, and making sure there's parking and, you know, safety for, for pedestrians, so that could be something that you can add, you know, you know, in, in a referral, is to take into this, this consideration, strongly consider, you can even throw the word strongly, if that's, you know, something that you stand behind.
Exactly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions, comments? This time, I'm looking for someone to make a motion.
I'll try that. So I'd like to make a motion that we, we make a, um, a favorable recommendation on this text amendment, uh, because of its, um, align, it is aligned with the P O C D, uh, for the most part, um, but that, uh, we strongly recommend that the items pointed out in the, uh, um, Planning Commission's staff report, uh, dated June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, uh, from the town engineer, John Casey, the environmental health supervisor, Maureen Whalen, and, uh, additionally, issues, um, discussed by Suss, Sussmita, uh, Toda, our town planner, um, be considered, uh, and addressed by the, uh, um, zoning commission, if possible.
Would anybody like to add anything to Paul's conditions? Looking for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item. Item, uh, number eight on the agenda is, uh, implementation plans. Uh, if you don't mind, Mrs. Tada, can you just give us an overview of what's going on with the Greenway and Complete Streets Committee?
Sure, um, so for the phase one of Greenway, um, which is going to be from Barnum Avenue, south of Barnum Avenue intersection to Harvey Place, um, we received, um, approval from D O T to proceed with our, um, bidder, our sole bidder for the project, and, um, they asked us to send, um, mayoral recommendation, which we just sent and awaiting their final approval before we proceed with the implementation. For the second phase of, uh, Complete Streets, which is, um, you know, from the area immediately north of Barnum Avenue intersection, all the way to Paradise Green, our consultant is working on concepts right now, three alternate concepts that can be shared with the community to seek their input on the recommendations and revise them, uh, in order to develop technical designs.
Item nine. Plan of Conservation Development. The, uh, full draft has been released, almost?
Yeah, we are working on releasing it through our P O C D website sometime this week. Um, I, the draft is done, uh, the first version of it, and, um, we still have to proofread, edit, and make some stylistic changes, but that doesn't, um, mean that we would like to hold it up, and, you know, it's never going to be final until it is final, so we, we decided we'd just release it so people can at least review what's in it, and if they see something that's not being addressed, or that has been discussed inappropriately, um, you know, or incorrectly. you know, or incorrectly is the right word, then they can actually reach out to me or our consultant Rory and will consider changing or revising the language based on the feedback. I also shared this with our technical advisory committee members last week, and I also have printed all the goals and objectives that are in the plan for your review. So please take a look at this document very closely. You'll have a lot of time, but time flies fast, especially summer. And by the end of the summer, we are ready for a final adoption. So I encourage you to, you know, review this chapter by chapter whenever you have some free time and think about all the issues, all the policies that were discussed before you in the past one year, and what were the concerns that, you know, residents mostly had, and if they are being addressed in the P O C D or not.
So when do you plan on having the, the draft for the public to see on the website?
Right away. We are releasing it either towards the end of this week or early next week. And then we also shared it with Connecticut Deep, Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, last week because we initially, we thought of waiting, but then we decided, you know, this requires ninety-day review by deep, and if we don't submit it by a certain time, we won't get it adopted by October. So we just sent it to them. And then I will be sending it out to all the members of the town boards and commissions as a link. I mean, instead of sending the entire document, which is a big file, just having it on the website is helpful. So I'm going to send it to everybody.
Absolutely. And then, sorry to keep putting you on the spot, but just for, for everybody and, you know, the members here, how are we looking on the timeline for?
Yeah, so our ninety-day review by Connecticut Deep ends on September eleventh. And we can't do anything before that. You can have a public informational meeting, but you cannot have a public workshop. So in order for you to adopt the plan, you have to have a public hearing, which means that you have to hold a public hearing after September eleventh. And our next meeting date is September seventeenth, I think, that month. So September seventeenth will be the public hearing on the P O C D. And assuming it'll go well, you will adopt that day. But I will also simultaneously refer this to the town council after we receive the feedback from Connecticut Deep, so that it's on their agenda. And the final adoption should be by the legislative body. And so most likely, they should be adopting it in October meeting, the second Tuesday of that month. If for some reason they need more time, you have one more month, or two more months, actually. December is when the plan expires. So by November, if you adopt it, you're still well within that ten-year window where you don't need any extensions. I also have to send this as a referral to Office of Policy and Management and Regional Council of Governments. So I will be sending that over to them along with sending this to all the board zone commissions members sometime next week because they only need sixty-five day review. And we're way ahead of that anyway. I will be out of office next week, so maybe the following week I will be doing that. And it'll also be on file with the town clerks for thirty, more than thirty-five days per statute. Our consultant is sending two hard copies. I'll keep one in the library and one in the town clerks for the public to come and review it if they cannot access it digitally.
Great. Can you just give us a heads up when the, when it goes, the draft goes on to the website too? So we can do our own, you know, let people know?
Sure, and we are also creating a social media post, like how we did for advertising for the events. And I will share that with you, and you can share in your social media.
I know the mayor sends out a, I guess, weekly, bi-weekly email with all the list of things going into town. Can that be included in that?
Certainly, I will have to coordinate.
Good idea.
I will be coordinating with our chief of staff to get the word out through the town.
Any other questions regarding the P O C D? I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Sarah, I'll make a motion to adjourn the June meeting.
Second, all, all in favor?